Sure, while she's getting my slides up, I can get started. My name is JT Lockman. I'm the Planning Director of Southern Maine Regional Planning. We're the Regional Planning Commission for York County, Maine, which is the first county you get to when you go over the bridge from Portsmouth, and some of southern Oxford County. So our district runs from Kittery up the coast to Old Orchard Beach, and then all the way west to the New Hampshire border up to Freiburg and Lovell, Stowe, those towns right in the White Mountains. We do a lot of comprehensive plans, zoning ordinance rewrites for towns, and this is our fifth year of doing sea level adaptation planning along the coast, and we are trying to take the messages that you've heard this morning and boil it down to a maximum of 20 minutes to selectmen workshops, and try to get adaptation planning started in the communities, and, you know, being able to live to tell about it at conferences. So it's a little bit different than the academic types of discussions we've had today. One of the, maybe if someone could start turning down the lights again, in my title slide, this is Old Orchard Beach, Maine. If you've ever been there, this is Temple Street in the Ocean Park neighborhood. This was April 7th, 2007, the 17th, the Patriot's Day storm in 2007, and we had a storm that was equal to the highest annual tide plus two feet. So we actually had a real flood that simulated two feet of sea level rise. So that really started us going five years ago. We are currently involved at the commission with three levels of sea level adaptation planning. The first thing we're doing is going out to communities with an initial program of public education, technical assistance. We have been to Scarborough, Old Orchard Beach, Saco, Biddeford, Kennebunka, Gunkwit, York, and Kittery. So all of those towns have had a Level 1 treatment where we come out and do an hour show. I talk about adaptation planning. The state marine geologist, Peter Slavinsky, from our Maine Geological Survey comes and talks about sea level rise and coastal change. You'll notice that Wells and Kennebunkport are missing. They didn't want to hear from us. They didn't want us to come. So that's going to happen. Certain communities don't want this news, and that's that. But we don't give technical assistance to people who don't want it. That doesn't work very well, so. The second level of effort that we've put in is we've created a multi-municipal standing committee that we call SLOG. It's a very annoying name, but people like it because they can't forget it. Sea Level Adaptation Working Group for Saco Bay. And Scarborough, Old Orchard Beach, Saco, and Biddeford have appointed members to this standing intermunicipal committee. We meet twice a month, and we're working on replicable efforts that we can do in all of the four communities to adapt to sea level rise, and I will be talking about what we're up to. The third level of effort that we're doing, since after all, we have been at this almost five years, is we're up to doing some implementation steps in certain of the communities. Some of the communities have heard our song and dance, gotten really upset, participated in the committee work, and are actually ready to maybe really do something. One of the things that we're working on right now, and I was supposed to have a workshop with the Saco City Council on March 5th to increase their floodplain management ordinance freeboard to three feet mandatory in all flood zones. I just got an email on my phone an hour ago that actually they're busy, and it's going to be two weeks after that. One of the things that is always a challenge is that the selectmen in these communities only give me like 25 minutes once a year, and usually I get bumped three or four or five times before I get in front of them because other more important things that usually have to do with dogs on the beach come up. And, you know, sea level rise is bad, but angry dog owners are way worse. So just tell that to your friends at Harvard, that really the most important problem in the world is whether you can let your dog run free, and which times a year, and that kind of stuff. So we're also doing an RFP that's going to come out tomorrow. So any engineers who want to work on this, you can see our RFP tomorrow. How to adapt the Agunkwit Sewage Treatment Plant to Sea Level Rise. I'll be showing you pictures of the plant. We got a grant from the Gulf of Maine Council and NROC to, we will be paying an engineer to study how to adapt that plant to storm surge and sea level rise. The town of York has asked the Planning Commission to develop a sea level rise adaptation chapter as an amendment to its comprehensive plan, and the Maine Coastal Program is chipping in towards that. We're also using LiDAR that Maine already has. We seem to be ahead of you in the LiDAR department for some reason. I guess we've got to be ahead of Massachusetts in something, and we are in LiDAR. We're already using it to create more accurate shorelines for our zoning maps. And in the someday category, we'd like to start removing some title restrictions, and I'll show you some of those later. So that's three levels of effort. Initial outreach, going to the communities, trying to get the thing institutionalized with real committees that continue to work on this, so it isn't just a one-shot presentation and then no one thinks about us again. And then the third step to actually do something. And I think what is making us different, and the reason why people are asking me to come around and talk about what we're doing, is that we aren't just restating the sea level problem. We're going beyond just saying, oh, my God, this is terrible, and, you know, describing the problem, that we're actually trying to create some municipal level action. We also, we're not getting any help from the Maine Legislature. We're certainly not getting any help from our governor, who is Tea Party type and says things, direct quote, "We need more paving and not planning." So we're not looking for state leadership on this. If we're going to get anything done, it has to be at the municipal level, and the regional planning commissions are a membership organization, the way we're structured. So when communities want to work on this, they ask us, we help them, and we do use Coastal Program funds that come from the Congress, from Coastal Zone Management Program to the state of Maine, and the governor has not pulled the plug on that yet. But it's not his money, it's federal money, so why would you do that? But he still might. But in any event, municipal action is where it's at, in my book. Also, unlike this morning, typically when we go out to communities, we do not discuss any of the causes of sea level change. We just go in and say, look, sea level is rising, here's the tide gauge, these are the best scenarios, and if anyone wants to talk about Agenda 21, or fight about the UN, or any of that stuff, we essentially tell them, listen, you know, write to the UN, because that's, we're not, we don't create, we're not discussing the causes, we're just trying to do something for this municipality to adapt to something you all can see. And then usually after we discuss it, there are people who live on the coast, and especially property owners who have been there their whole lives, if they're 70, 80 years old, they remember the dry beach being much, much larger than it is today. And ultimately, we just sidestep the whole, why is it happening? And folks can go home and ruminate about that, but it's not part of our discussion. We want to be talking to selectmen, city councilors, managers. Everyone loves, in our business, if you want to, you know, if you're an environmental scientist, you want to go talk to the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, because they smile, they're friendly, they're your kind of people, they don't want to scream at you, they're usually really nice. But the going to visit your city councilors, or going to visit the selectmen is a much tougher room. And a lot of people, when you say, you know, let's go to this city council meeting and talk about this, they're like, whoa, I think I'm busy that night. That sounds scary, I don't know. But we need to do, that's where you need to go. So that's what I mean by engage the correct municipal players and really understand local politics. And we have had to get creative about funding because we don't have much, we don't have really any general fund, state funding of any kind. It's all through Coastal Program and NOAA. Also, I work very extensively with Peter Slavinsky of the Maine Geological Survey. I mentioned him before. He's our state marine geologist. And however, he can't go to a city council meeting in Biddeford, or a town council meeting in Old Orchard Beach, and say, I'm from the state and I'm here to talk to you about sea level rise, and not have the guy from the Regional Planning Commission next to him, because then it's a state presentation, and that's bad. And no one wants to hear anyone from the state. But if he's paired with me, I'm somebody who's helped them do their comprehensive plan, I've helped them rewrite their zoning, I'm sort of considered a pal of the municipalities, and the state is considered a threat to the municipalities. So by pairing us up, it's worked marvelously. Also, Pete's a really nice guy and very likable, and just because he works for the state doesn't mean he's evil. I mean, so he's able, but the combination of him actually being nice and not evil, and the fact that he comes with me, who they're familiar with, and people seem to believe, or they do believe, that the Regional Planning Commission is sort of understands the municipal people, how they feel, and what their stresses and strains are, but maybe the state people aren't quite as sensitive to what their lives are like, or what their concerns are. So teaming it up that way really helps. We, in all of our work going out to the communities, we're looking at two feet by 2100, and we also have started doing scenarios with one meter or 1.8 meters. We do get criticisms from environmentalists who say, ah, you should be saying, you know, two, three meters because the ice sheets are going to melt. And then we get criticisms from Agenda 21 and Tea Party folks that are saying, you know, there is no sea level rise. So I think we're doing okay with two feet, because we seem to get criticism from both sides, because we say to the environmentalists, listen, it's hard enough doing this job, telling people to plan for two feet of sea level rise in 2100. If I came in here saying plan for like five feet, you know, I'd be dead, and then there'd be nobody talking about sea level rise to the selectmen. You know, so the other, so we are very modest, and we use bathtub models, and we don't talk about gravity and ice sheets, and we really do try and keep it simple, because in that environment, you really only have about 20 minutes to a half an hour to cover what we're doing a whole day on here. Some of our main communities are willing to go over and above the state minimum ordinances, or even FEMA floodplain management because of their actual experiences with flooding. That seems to be the case. We have hit some very strange delays in that, in 2009, FEMA came in and said, we're remapping York and Cumberland Counties, the flood maps need to be updated. That led in 2010 to the Great Flood Map Revolt of 2010, and now the flood maps have been withdrawn for York and Cumberland Counties. And maybe it's going to come back as some sort of incarnation of Risk Map in 2014, and you folks who work with FEMA know what that means. It doesn't matter. But basically FEMA was going to remap the area, there was unbelievable resistance to that, and it didn't happen. They backed off. Strangely enough, during this time, people were saying, listen, JT, we believe that sea level's rising, but we can't have you come do a presentation and talk about it, because then we'd have to admit that sea level's rising, and that would weaken our case, saying that the FEMA flood maps are wrong, and that there really isn't going to flood. So they need, there was like, people were saying, well, they were talking to FEMA, saying, ah, you know, our town's in great shape, we don't like your new flood maps, they're too, they're too strict, and, you know, they're predicting floods, those floods are never going to happen. Then they'd talk to me and say, we want you to help us plan for sea level rise, but we can't do both at the same time, because we would sound two-faced. I was like, well, you do sound two-faced. So in some of these, there's been big gaps in the work, so, but, you know, human beings are very complex, and sometimes can harbor conflicting feelings within one body, it happens to everyone. So what I'm going to show you now is some slides of sort of the, which is really sort of a glossed-over presentation of sort of what we typically show to the selectmen at workshops when we're setting up the stage for a sea level rise, technical assistance And I edited this because I knew you'd be getting a lot of other slides on this today. This just shows documented sea level rise in Maine in particular, so that you can see, you know, what's going on in my area as opposed to yours. Down in York County, it's around 1.8 to 2 millimeters a year if you go from 1926 to the present, but it seems to be doing more down east. And here's the Portland Tide Gauge. This is really consistent with what we've seen in other presentations today. From 1912 to 2011, that's an overall rate of 1.86 millimeters per year, you know, almost 1.9, 7.3 inches per century. So that's measured sea level rise. And we did the same trick that others have today. We plotted this along the IPCC, and it is following the upper IPCC projections. We also have found Portland Tide Gauge again. If you start in 1993 and you go to 2011, lately, it's been 4.17 millimeters per year. So if you just go back since 93, the rate is increasing. Another thing that's happened is that, in a way, some banks and insurance companies are ahead of us in government. A group called CoreLogic in May, CoreLogic is a publicly traded company that does research and appraisal for insurance companies and big banks. And they came out with a report on storm surge, where they looked at 10 major U.S. coastal areas in the east, and they found that most of the at-risk homes within the 10 metro areas that they studied are in fact located outside of FEMA-defined flood zones.
So what we see, oh, my microphone died. What we see in the, it's back on, okay. What we see in the banking and insurance industry is that the old paradigm where if a property's not in a FEMA flood zone, it's absolutely fine because it's breaking down. The banks and insurance companies are realizing that if a property's not in the flood zone, it still has a pretty high chance of getting hit, and they have to worry about that. Unfortunately, the, our selectmen and city councilors are pretty much stuck in the, well, many of them are stuck in the past, where if it's not in the flood zone, we're not worried. So then we give, we talk about sea level rise policy in Maine. There is a long history of it from way before Al Gore. We often get, one of the attacks that we would get is that this sort of emphasis on sea level rise is sort of a new fad, and there is a long history of this before, way before Al Gore. 1985, Maine had a coastal policy to discourage growth in areas impacted by sea level rise. In 1995, a major report was done on the York County coast called Anticipatory Planning for Sea Level Rise, funded by US EPA, and it was a wonderful report, it's still on the EPA's website, it's a great piece of work, but it was completely ignored. In 2006, the Maine Sandown Act and Sandown rules, it was put into regulation that we would include two feet of sea level rise by 2100. So when we got to 2010, and we did a legislative report in Maine called People and Nature: Adapting to a Changing Climate, Charting Maine's Course, of course, this report had all kinds of usual policy statements about planning to adapt to sea level rise, but it really was a culmination of, you know, 25 years of this, not just some new fad. Then we, usually we tailor for each community, we do an inundation scenario. That's a simple bathtub model, really similar to what Greg has developed. And we look at impacts of sea level rise on marsh habitat, building footprints, and roads in construction, and pump stations. Here's our LiDAR coverage, it's better than yours. It's great. No gaps, it's terrific, and we're getting more. The other thing that, when we look at marshes, the low marsh goes up to mean-high water. That's sort of where the high-water mark of the tide comes all the time. High marsh will occur up to the highest annual tide, the height of the spring tide, and there's sort of a point where low marsh changes to high marsh. And what we do is a lot, a lot easier than what you saw this morning. Rather than go all over the Maine coast, doing, you know, rods into the marsh and trying to take survey measurements, we're using LiDAR to figure out how much low marsh there is, how much high marsh there is, and from the LiDAR deriving how much low marsh will lose when sea level goes up. And the first scenarios we did on inundation were for Saco Bay. The SLOG communities, Scarborough, Old Orchard Beach, Saco, and Biddeford, all share this seven miles of sand. Old Orchard Beach you may have heard of, but the beach continues on into Saco and into Scarborough at its north end, and then Biddeford has Hills Beach on this side of the bay. So here's an area, an example. This is existing wetlands, and using the mean-high water and highest annual tide line, we're showing in dark blue the low marsh, and in light blue the high marsh. This is the Scarborough marsh area of the bay. And this is a close-up of a neighborhood in Scarborough called Pine Point. And once again, you can see that the low marsh is this dark blue, and the high marsh is that light blue, existing conditions. With two feet of sea level rise, we can show the community that pretty much all of the high marsh converts to low marsh, and there's, it's pinched out, it can't move, so the high marsh shrinks terribly. And then you also get some neighborhoods that could become high marsh, which is bad, as well as Pine Point Road going underwater, and this is the Amtrak train to Portland from Boston, the down Easter rail line. So currently, Saco Bay, if you look at those four communities, 63% high marsh, 37% low marsh. And with two feet of sea level rise, high marsh will drop down to 20, less than 20%, and the low marsh may increase significantly to over 80%. And we don't really know what that means for the fishing industry, and that's a good question. I'd love for fisheries biologists to start telling us. Potential impacts to buildings. This is the Camp Ellis neighborhood of Saco. This place is called Wormwoods Restaurant. This was the Patriot's Day 2007 storm, and we had done a simulation of highest annual tide plus two feet. This storm came in and flooded this area to the height of the highest annual tide plus two feet. So we ground-truthed our scenario, unfortunately, but the good news is, is our scenario was perfect. The actual flood of Patriot's Day was just like our scenario, which shows you the power of LiDAR, and it really worked. These are building footprints impacted by varying tide levels, and I'm going to, this is the neighborhood where, this was the scenario that showed highest annual tide plus two feet in blue, and those are the flood depths. This scenario, when the storm came, it flooded just like that. So this is the scenario that is ground-truthed, unfortunately. And this shows the depth of the building footprints. And here's a picture of that house on that day, and the GIS scenario said that it would flood from 2.1 to 3 feet at the base of the structure. And you can see that, now, jeez, that LiDAR scenario thing works pretty good. And what we said as a conclusion is that in Saco Bay, if you look at all those four communities, 1,220 building footprints would be affected after two-foot rise in sea level. If you took a 100-year storm and added two feet, it'd be up to 2,400 building footprints with a value over $1 billion. And that's just using the assessed values. We didn't do anything fancy like depth damage functions or anything. And here's the intersection of Temple Avenue and West Grand Avenue that day, and of course, this is also an is also an evacuation route. This is Route 9 going this way. The state road is. So with the highest annual tide plus two feet, potential roads inundated. The green roads are okay. These red roads are all inundated. That car was in that intersection right there. That was in the deepest part. And here's some more pictures of cars in a shower flood right over there. So the other issue is the Amtrak train. You can see that the tracks, you don't have to be a rocket scientist or a geomorphologist to know that those tracks are pretty close to the water. And we're saying that with two feet of sea level rise, 2.8 miles of that track will be inundated. If you look at 100-year storm plus two feet, it's going to be 4.1 miles So this is a, this is a, these are four town totals for those four Saco Bay communities. So how do we move out of the first level where we paint a disturbing picture of the future? Because it sure is easy to paint a disturbing picture of the future. Obviously, the way to move on from the disturbing picture of the future is for a committee. So, and make it better than that, not just any committee, a regional committee does. You know, obviously, if just one town does it, what good is that? It's gotta be a whole group. So they have this slogan in the SLAW communities, "One, one, one bay." We're all in one bay. So the four communities got together and we worked on this regional committee. Took about two years to get it going. And here's everybody's logo, as is the desktop. And in 2010, we developed an inter-local agreement to create the working group. We set up this, like, the bylaws and action plan. We had it signed off by each of the city and town councils of the four communities. We got funding from our state planning office. We got two people appointed from each community. There were a couple of fights over who should be on it. Some people were kept off it as spite, and other people were put on it as a punishment. You know the drill. In 2010, 2011, we did a vulnerability assessment and an action plan, and it was tasks. And we're starting to do the first thing on our list right now, which is try to get a three-foot freeboard in all adopted, in the floodplain ordinances of all communities. That being, freeboard is the distance that you're supposed to elevate a building. If you build a new building, or if your building is destroyed by more than 50%, currently, you're supposed to put it back one foot higher than the 100-year flood. We're suggesting that number be increased to three feet higher than the 100-year flood to allow for an extra margin of two additional feet. And it is really hard to get that on the agenda, but we're all gonna do it. So without implementation, there's not much point in making plans. I hate making plans that, where you don't do anything. So what are we doing? What is next on our plate? Like I said, we're working on increasing the freeboard. This house has been elevated about one foot above the FE, base blood elevation. We're looking for something like that. Here's someone who did it voluntarily. This is a very complicated diagram, but we also have a state regulation in Maine under Sandun Act that requires elevation in erosion hazard areas under a state permit. So the councilors and selectmen all want to know, well, if we adopt a local thing, how much worse is it than the state? Or is it as bad as the state? Or what if someone's in the state zone and not in the city zone? If they're in the city zone and not in the state zone? All the different combination and permutations. So we had to work on these graphics showing all the different situations. And we also have done inventories, if the new freeboard ordinance is in place, exactly which and how many properties would be affected. Because before, before acting on these, the selectmen and councilors wanted to know, okay, how many people are we talking about? Which houses, which neighborhoods? So we did this background where we're showing that these red dot houses are in the state erosion hazard area and in the city floodplain management ordinance areas. The yellow ones are not in a city floodplain, but they're in the state erosion hazard area and so forth. Okay, I'm gonna finish up with talking about the sewage treatment plant. This is Agunkwit's Sewage Treatment Plant. This was a very unfortunate plant site. The salt marsh is here. The dunes and beach are here. The plant spans the Barry Beach. Here's an aerial view of the Agunkwit Sewage Treatment Plant. Here is the, here is the location map. This is the Agunkwit River. To make life even more exciting, I've told this to a couple of geologists, said, "Oh, there probably was a beach right, a breach right here, and probably if there's a rain event, the river will just straighten out and shoot right through the cloud." But, but this, what, there was a, a gravity source system put in in the, probably around 1900, cast, you know, cast iron pipes that brought untreated sewage out to the ocean from these neighborhoods. And then in the 70s, when the EPA was offering free federal money to build sewage treatment plants, they just plugged in the plant at the low point of the system. And where's a lower point on the system than at the Barry Beach, right before the outfall? So that's where they put it. And here's our LiDAR, and we used Arc Globe. Here's the dunes. There's the ocean. Here's the, the, the place where they made the dunes a little shorter in their room for the plant, in planning. And there's the back up against the marsh. And we, we used Arc Globe to show the heights of LiDAR in 3D with exagger, vertical exaggeration. These are the actual heights. The dunes in front of the plant are about, about 14 to 16 feet high. That's not really high enough. And back here, the, the back of the plant's at negligible elevation. Okay. The flood zone map from 1992 shows the plant has not been a flood zone. I don't know, they say that FEMA maps are not political. But first, you saw the pictures I just showed you. This place is not higher than that place. It just isn't. So somehow FEMA made this flood zone go around the plant. However, in the provisional digital firm that was presented to these, to all of the communities in 2009, where they had the revolt in 2010, wearing out an office, take it back, and FEMA went back to the drawing board, the provisional firm said that the plant was in an AO zone, three-foot depth, that the dunes at this end of the plant were V-zone 17 feet. And at the marsh was an A-zone 9 feet. And if you look at it, look at the LiDAR and look at the plant, that basically, the, the 2009 new flood maps would say, this is, you know, this plant is squarely in a 100-year floodplain. It's not just a sea level rise problem. This is a 100-year storm problem, but a now, like, current. So, but these maps, I think, I'm pretty sure our senators were even involved in having these maps pulled. So I don't know when they'll be affected. So here's our scenario of what happens to the plant if the 1978 storm comes back with one meter of sea level rise. It gets flooded. And that would mean that all of the, about 3,000 hotel rooms and 3,000 houses on the system would just bypass until they fixed the plant, which would take months, and probably the beach would be closed. Here's how the plant looks. This is from the parking lot, looking across the river, looking across the marsh to the back of the plant, from the marsh side. Here's the number-one pump station in the parking lot where I'm standing. And here's how the plant looks. I'm standing at the high part of the plant, looking back towards the marsh. There's the marsh out there through the, through the gate of the driveway. Here's the road into the plant on the marsh side. And there's that parking lot where I took a picture across the river. It's over here. On the dune side, here's the waves and the dry beach. There's a, a little steel wall that, on the top of the dune system, that protects the plant from the ocean side. And I went past the scary signs put up by the Conservation Commission, "Don't walk on the dunes." I walked on them and took this picture. So sorry. But that, that shows, you know, what we're talking about from the ocean side. Like I said, York is one town down from Agunkwit. You can see their dry beach isn't so big anymore. But there's a lot of economic activity, hotels, campgrounds, hockey town going on on this beach. And we're going to do a sea level rise chapter for their comprehensive plan. We're starting that this spring. We're using the LiDAR to fix zoning maps. In Old Orchard Beach, we could actually see the shoreline moving. I'm about to wrap up. So we've changed the shoreline zone so that 250 feet from the water is now here instead of at the edges. So I think I'm going to wrap up. The last thing I wanted to show you, which we haven't started yet, is we're looking at removing some tidal restrictions. But I want to try and stick to our schedule so we don't stop questions.
Who is the design engineer of that wastewater treatment plant?
I don't know. That was put in before my bar mix, so I don't know.
Janet?
Do you have any overriding state law in the building code that won't allow you to do free, export free water on a community basis in Rhode Island? We can't, we can't supersede this.
No, we actually didn't have a state building code until about a year ago. Then we just got a new state building code. But then with the last election, if you know anything about Governor LePage and the new legislature, they were trying to repeal the building code. So we even, haven't even had the building code long enough to interfere with that. And, and, and we don't seem to have that restriction in Maine. Everyone seems to believe we do have the authority to increase the freeboard in our floodplain management boards. No one's told us that that's illegal. But I am, I have heard about that as a problem in Rhode Island now.
I have two questions. One, just in Massachusetts, we worked with the State Board of Building Regulations and Standards, and they did require a freeboard, a freeboard of two feet in the velocity zone. We tried to convince them to use the word "sea level rise," but they didn't. They use it for the inaccuracies in the modeling used for the flood insurance rate maps and so forth. We do have that, two feet. Now, we were also told by the folks at the Board of Building Regulations and Standards that we cannot go higher than the state building code in Massachusetts. That means the two-foot freeboard in the V-zone is probably as far as you can go. And many of, several of the municipalities, including the town of Sichu, that I'm in right now, have a one-foot freeboard. We could move it up to two. But my understanding legally is also that, and we do need legal clarification, that we can't go higher than the state building code, is one comment. The other one is, in terms of the planning boards, now, when you require a three-foot freeboard, you're, are you also gonna work with variances to the height limitations on a lot of these buildings?
Yeah, in the, in the proposal that I'm going to in March in Saco, we have put into the zoning ordinance in the chapter on variances that you can, if you're elevating building, an existing building that's been damaged by storms more than 50%, and it's elevated up to the new freeboard height, you get to maintain the distance between the base floor and the top, and you can exceed the height limit without variance. The reason is because in the past, when that's happened, the GBA, after six or eight months, always gave them the variance anyway. And it was just sort of kind of a torturous rigmarole. Nobody seemed to be against the concept of allowing that variance. That if some, you know, why would you force somebody to, who's trying to do something good by elevation, to cut the top of their houseline? That would sort of keep his attitude. So that seems, I think that's going to work.
Just one quick follow-up question. There's two, there's two components to addressing adaptation to sea level rise. One's vertical, which we all seem to find a lot easier to deal with municipal ordinances and so forth. But there's also a horizontal component. Is there anything in Maine that, or are you planning anything in Maine that would require a, an area landward of marshes and dunes and Barry Beaches or whatever to allow that to migrate landward? In other words, a no-touch zone?
Well, I can tell you that in the 90s, we had a very much more activist state geologist head of department. And the 1995 plan that I showed you included plans for rolling easements and buyouts. And the officials that presented that really got, really got shunned with fear and never, so, no. So that's been foreboding since 1995. I won't answer that question.
Well, can you join me in thanking JT? Oh, I think, one quick question there.
Can you put dirt around the cement when you raise the freeboards?